Okay, here we are at the first Curriculum and Evaluation Committee meeting of the year. It is Tuesday, January 21st, 2020, and we are calling the meeting to order at 6:32 PM. In attendance, we have, I'm going to go ahead and call the roll, and it's going to be Jessica Brown, I'm here, Paula Johnson, present, Gloria Timmons.
Here.
We also have, so we do have a quorum. We also have in attendance Heather Raymond, and Dr. Mrs. Fitzpatrick, and Dr. McKinney, and Ms. Caitlin Porpelia. All right, so the first meeting item on the agenda this evening is middle school math resources. I'm going to hand it over to Dr. McKinney.
So I'll hand it over to Ms. Fitzpatrick and Caitlin Porpelia, our math coach. They're going to review the history of math resources from the past to the present and ask for the board's support. Mrs. Fitzpatrick.
Thank you. So this presentation says middle school, but it also includes a little bit of historical information about elementary as well to show the progression. So, okay, let's go slide, oh, here we go. So they went before I was here and Dr. McKinney was here, and before Caitlin was a coach. They went through a selection process in 2015, 16, for K through 5 math program. There was a review of materials and resources. There was presentations by publishing companies of the resources and materials teams wish to review further. In-depth analysis of each program following a rubric by individual team members. So they filled out the rubric for what it did and did not have, and its strengths and weaknesses. And then there was a presentation of each program analysis to the selection team. The final selection of math materials and resources that best aligns to the standards and curriculum units for piloting is what was chosen. So that's how they chose what they piloted. And then, continuing the selection process for the K through 5, the teachers piloted those math programs that they had selected through that other process. And the feedback from students, parents, district elementary administration, math curriculum specialists and coaches, and the Mass Steering Committee, and the Assistant Superintendent at the time, and the Board of Education, was all taken into account. The progression of the implementation after the adoption of Eureka for K through 5 was that it was going to be implemented, and all grades in elementary school K through 5 are in the fourth year of implementation. Middle school, which is grade 6 through 8, grade 6 is in year 3, so the second year, 6th grade started, 7th grade is two years in, and 8th grade is one year in. And we did this slow progression of implementation to let people have time to look at and work with the curriculum at the middle school level. Why Eureka for middle school? Well, BOE had already adopted Great Minds, but that's also known as Eureka Math. Eureka Math was developed specifically to meet the new standards. It builds on whole number of visual models and extends that understanding to fractions, integers, and algebra. It builds student confidence year by year by helping students achieve true understanding of math, not just algorithms. So it's more applied math than just knowing the formulas. And teaching mathematics is a story. Eureka builds students' knowledge logically and thoroughly to help them achieve deep understanding. So the benefits of implementing Eureka K through 8. It's helping us to vertically align the curriculum, which has been a large part of what both Dr. McKinney and I have been working at, at our prospective levels since we got here. There's a continuous standard progression. It helps build conceptual understanding, and as kids move into middle school, we try to build in those abstract skills even more because they become less concrete. The consistent model and terminology K through 8 makes it so that students don't have to learn a different, different programs have different terminology they use, and this way, they're getting consistent terminology K through 8, so the time isn't spent on that because it's already common language. There's common assessments, formative and summative, and we've been doing a lot of work on that across the district to be able to assess how students across the district are doing in 8th grade math in all three middle schools, and 7th grade math in all three middle schools, and 4th grade math across the 12 elementary schools. And that's really good and important information for us to have as a district. And there's rigorous learning expectations, and we want to provide rigor with differentiation as needed, but we want rigor in our curriculum. So the benefits specific to grades 6 through 8 are it provides learning experiences that include mathematical discourse, preparing students for high school level math courses and competencies. Common Core standards for mathematical practices are integrated into each module and identified in each language, in each lesson, as noted in the teacher workbook. So the teacher has a really clear guide to help them implement the program. And students have previously developed familiarity, I said this, with terminology, visual models, and the Eureka format. This allows a smooth transition from elementary to middle school, allowing teachers to easily, efficiently, and effectively engage prior knowledge. One of the things that we're looking at right now in elementary school, they have Cuisinere rods and cluster cards as supporting resources to help students. And at middle school, we're in the process of vetting supporting resources. We actually are looking at one that's a free resource, and here's the difference with Eureka in middle school versus elementary. In elementary, there's a lot more practice, and in middle school, there's less of that material provided because the assumption is that middle school students have moved along the continuum of practice. And so teachers are wanting additional resources to support students that may be struggling with some of the concepts. Do you want to speak more to that?
Sure. There are also some other best practices that Eureka doesn't explicitly include in the materials. So teachers are creating those on their own, or they're going outside to look for that resource that helps support the curriculum. So we want to make sure that we are still sticking to the essence of Eureka, but looking for materials that really are vetted and support Eureka as a resource. And by looking for these additional resources, it will save teachers' time in creating that and making sure that they are high quality, and that they're also, there's an equity piece that they're available to all students in the district as well.
So ultimately, because this process started previous to when I was here and the current coaches, BOE did not officially adopt Eureka for 6 through 8. You adopted Great Minds, which is the previous Eureka. So we're looking for your support to officially adopt Eureka for grades 6 through 8, so that we have a K through 8 Eureka curriculum.
Does anyone have any questions at this time about the Great Minds or Eureka curriculum? Paula?
Thank you. What is the frequency of measurements in the elementary grade so we could see that they're really progressing with this program?
I know I should know this, but I'm middle and high school, so I'll have to defer to Dr. McKinney.
Can you pass these down?
Sure. Thank you, Dr. McKinney. Oh, sorry. Passing. Oops, thank you.
So first, to your question, in Eureka, there are exit slips for teachers to assess student knowledge that come with the curriculum. There's homework, we have student modules, and every unit has a mid and end of module assessment. Some teachers can use the mid or end as a pre-teaching to assess students' knowledge, but they should be, our expectation, using both of those to assess student performance. In addition, for math assessments, we also have iReady, fluency ladders that are provided to schools, and then we also look at the state assessment results.
Yes, Paula?
Thank you. Since I haven't been on the board, so I don't, I'm trying to learn a little bit more about this. Compared to the other math programs we have, how is the proficiency in this one compared to the prior programs? And do we really find that this is working much better in the concept of math versus the way we used to do math? Because I know that one time, I think we had New Math or something, another program prior to this one, I was on the board. So how are we comparing these two with these students gaining the knowledge?
I can't recall a comparison between programs that we've done, nor could you compare state assessments, because the assessment has changed. But included in this strategic plan is an update of the Curriculum Management Plan. All curriculum should come up for review every seven years. So that's expected for the spring of next year. And I think, to your question, Mrs. Johnson, that's when you would go through those cycles of review and establish, are the results, you're getting the results that you want, or are there gaps in the curriculum and doing some revision? So the past Curriculum Management Plan unfortunately had expired, so that's part of the work we're doing next. As far as ongoing data analysis, this month, our data analyst is sending building-based instructional leadership teams their school data on all the data sources we have, and asking them to sit with their teams and say, what are the strengths? What are you doing well? What are the areas of need? What resources do you need, and what's professional development? And then they're going to report back up to the district. So all that's included in our strategic plan.
Yes, go ahead. Ms. Raymond?
Thank you. Dr. McKinney, can you help refresh my recollection of the presentation you did at the beginning of the school year regarding the iReady test scores? And I know that we went back and forth a little bit about it, but did the iReady test scores show a progression of knowledge over the course of the year? So from fall to end of year, did it show that our students were gaining, like their scores were going up, or they were gaining knowledge over the course of the year using these programs?
I can't remember that. I think they were slipping in math.
I don't recall the slides.
I don't either.
Perfectly.
I think we went roundabout, but it was...
So again, so right now, we're asking the building-based leadership teams to look at those things, then report out to the district. I think, as I pointed out, and maybe in that presentation or another one, the assessment in iReady is very different than the way it looks in Eureka.
Okay.
So you may get different results. I'm not saying they are. I'd have to go back and look. But a lot of the module and end of module assessments are paper pencil, and the way we do number bonds and some things, those visual models that they see on iReady are not exactly to what they see in Eureka, nor are they the same as what they see in, on the state assessment. So there could be some discrepancies.
I would agree. I think maybe the testing that particular knowledge base is kind of tough. I think the testing looks a little bit different, all of, like, different than this. However, I will say, from my perspective, my children have both done this curriculum. My younger daughter's been in this since first grade. My older daughter has been transitioned from the previous math curriculum, which was everyday math. And I will say, this is far superior. Like, as far as building a knowledge base, I actually even reached out to a couple of my math teacher friends in the area, and they mentioned that this starts having kids look at algebraic thinking at an earlier age. One place where I, and then it builds up, and so I will say, it looks at it differently than when we learned. So it's not necessarily the numbers, it's not the same order that we learned things in. But by the time they get into the middle school area, things are really starting to click, and I think that they're further ahead in some ways than I probably was in 7th grade.
Mm-hmm. Go ahead.
So there was a request for some information on Eureka, so I included the curriculum map for grades 6 through 8, a module overview. This is an example of the Homework Helper that teachers can give out to students and families, and then last, a tip for parents. So while we've looked into some of these resources in the past, now we've rolled over to a new website. We're trying to become strategic in how we make some of these supporting materials available for parents, because it is different than when I learned math, and I didn't learn it all that well. These models are different. But to your point, in 2nd grade, I can recall walking through classrooms, and they start with 2 plus n equals 7, and they have to solve for n. So it starts at a pretty younger age, so.
Yeah. Go ahead. Oh, and I just wanted to point out that I don't know for middle school yet, because my son hasn't needed help yet. But for elementary school, for Eureka, you can just Google "Eureka Math Help," and there's like dozens of YouTube videos walking parents through how to do the math. So like, you could do grade 5, Module 1, and it'll come up with exactly what my child was learning in grade 5, Module 1, and walk me through how to do it. Khan Academy has a bunch of videos too, that follow the modules, for free. So for parents who are struggling with it, it was very helpful to me to watch a YouTube video, and then pretend like I knew it all along.
I will actually add to your point. I would agree with that, that if we choose to adapt this permanently, or adopt it permanently, I think that we should make sure there's some links for support for parents on the website, easily accessible, like one of the top things you can click on, because that is, taped diagrams are not easy to teach when you don't know what it is.
That might have been the module, like Google.
I'm pretty sure that's like 4th grade, so yeah.
I do have a question. Is it fun? Because what happened is, I do have a 1st grader that do not want to go to school because he has to do math. And he's in...
Virchell.
Doesn't want to go. He said, "I don't want to go and do math." So how do you encourage the parent to say, "Okay, math is fun, and you need to know math?" And that is a problem, because he likes everything else, but he does not like math.
Do you feel like the supplemental, oh, sorry, go ahead.
So I'm more middle school and secondary. But I think that's one of the things that we're looking at in terms of the supporting resources here, is that, first off, one program's not going to be the be-all and end-all, right? And there's, there's no golden ticket. We wish there was. But allowing teachers to customize those lessons and to take into account the students that they have in front of them, there is room for doing that in Eureka. I don't have an answer for you in how to make it fun overall. I think that's based on the student's experience and the teacher that they have, but I know that there's work around making math engaging for students. And I know that that's always been my passion, is that I want, I want kids to really enjoy math. You don't have to love it, but to enjoy it and have a good, positive experience, and to continue that growth mindset that hopefully they're developing.
Okay, thank you.
What would, I'm sorry, Dr. McKinney?
So at the elementary level, we have two other coaches along with Caitlin. We have Krista Burrell and Megan Duprat, who are visiting the elementary schools, and they work on those sort of games of using the Cuisinere rods, using the number cards and playing games. And more teachers, after they've been using Eureka for a while, are now almost going to centers or like a guided reading model, where they have kids playing different games. Zern is a supporting technological application where they use some problems, and they use their Chromebooks for that, but then the teacher gets to do some direct instruction with them. So learning is fun. Not everything is going to be as fun as an iPad or a cellphone, but we are trying to find creative ways to make it applicable for kids.
Thank you.
What would some of the support materials at the middle school and high school look like? What would you be searching for? Were you looking like for homework supplements, for math facts? What kind of things?
Can you repeat that second part you said?
I don't know. I was just giving examples, like, what kind of things would you be looking for for supplements?
So we're looking for high-quality resources, so we want to make sure that the time that teachers are spent using these resources, that they support the work that Eureka has already done in terms of developing conceptual understanding and sticking in line with the progression of that understanding. But there are a few resources out there that are highly rated on. Ed Reports is a great place to go to look at resources. Eureka is highly rated on there. Some of the ones that we're looking at are developed by authors of the Common Core, and so it's all in line with what we're doing and our goals for this district. It's still playing on the visual models. That's really important, is that we keep that going through Eureka, and that helps to develop that algebraic understanding for them, so that they're more apt to be successful in algebra. I can, I mean, we have a list of a couple that we're looking at, but I think we want to look through the vetting process first and make sure that they're what we would, we would want to use.
Are there any areas where you can see that Eureka falls short, any specifics?
So one of the places is fact fluency, and that's something that teachers are having to implement on their own. There's no, at the middle school level, there really isn't a lot of daily practice with facts, especially their learning in 7th grade integer operations. So they're adding, subtracting, multiplying, dividing with negatives, and that's really the first experience that they have with that. And so teachers are finding that they're needing to add that in to make sure that students get enough practice with that, especially preparing them for when they get to the high school level. And I think there's some other things that, it's a timed program, so there's always this time crunch, which is going to be the case anyway. They have 45 minutes to teach, and Eureka is timed for 45 minutes. So unfortunately, teachers don't have an extra 10 or 15 minutes to add on for remediation for students who just really aren't getting that lesson, or have some gaps in their understanding.
Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. So what are we doing for these students? I'm glad you brought up that they're falling short, and there's no time for the remediation. What are we doing for these students to make sure that they don't fall short and that they're understanding the math? That's a big question, I know. I never come up with small questions.
Yeah, I think there's some currently existing supports for those students. We have math intervention teachers at each of the, or each of the middle schools. So they are providing supports for students with significant gaps. We also have, obviously, special ed teachers who are working with our students who are identified. And so those are, those are the big gaps in student understanding that are being addressed in that way. The students who are, let's say, one or two grade levels behind, I think that a lot of that work is being done in the classroom. The teachers are scaffolding the Eureka lessons, and they are working with the students and the skill set that they have in front of them, and helping to fill in some of those gaps, but still moving forward. That way, that your students who are struggling are still accessing the current grade level curriculum and being able to still progress through those middle grades.
How many students are you finding coming out of the elementary school that might be behind one or two grade levels or a little bit more with the math program, going to the middle school? Do we have any data on that? I don't have any data.
I didn't bring it to... So frame your question again. You would like to know how many kids are coming out of the elementary into the middle grade 6? So grade 5 to grade 6?
That are struggling in the math program. That are behind.
Well, could you narrow down struggling?
One to two years. I don't want to say three to four, because I'm hoping that nobody's that far behind, which I've seen before in reading. I'm hoping that we're grabbing them before, not literally grabbing them, but we're finding out that these students are struggling, and we're giving them more remedial math help. But, you know, when we've got, we're going to probably, you know, support 6 through 8 on, on the program to continue the math program, so it's a continuation from grade school, so they're not learning something new. But you're also, I'm also kind of curious, how, I mean, we know that their kids have fallen through the cracks. And with that, what are we doing at the high school level? Okay, so this is the elementary to middle school. Do they have a different math program when they get to the high school? Or are we going to, or is there another program that we're going to bring into this? I guess this, to me, is just continuing one program into the other, so there's consistency here for these students.
And if it's already successful, then it makes sense.
Sense that you want to continue it.
So before I stepped into the math coach role, I was a teacher here at North in math, and I was also head teacher for a couple of years. So they, they have looked at using Eureka in Algebra 1, which would be the next step for students if they're on grade level and they're progressing through the middle school grades appropriately. So they would step into Algebra 1 as a 9th grader. That's something that's out there to explore. In addition to that, we are looking at aligning the curriculum, so making sure that all of those visual models that students have seen K through 8 are carrying in and available in Algebra 1, as well as the terminology, so that's consistent, and even just the curriculum. So there are some overlapping pieces, so there's some content that they're seeing in grade 8 that we also cover in Algebra 1, the way that our curriculum is currently designed. So we're looking at that and making some decisions that'll probably happen over the next couple of years in terms of what is it that they can cover in grade 8, and we can take out of Algebra 1? What do we need to go over again, just to make sure that students have a solid foundation in that? Some of those decisions will have to happen as a transition because of students and their Eureka background as they're coming up.
This is actually an extended question about the high school. At the high school, do they, do they, do you choose your class, like, you're taking Algebra 1, or Geometry 1, or Trigonometry, or is it, it's some more specific? Is that how it is?
Yes, so we have a, we have a suggested path, right, that students take. So most kids will come in, and if you're on grade level, we'll say, they'll step right into Algebra 1, and then Geometry and Algebra 2. For students who maybe still need some additional time working with that middle school and some of the elementary content, they have the opportunity to take Pre-Algebra before they go into the Algebra 1 course. So they're getting some additional time.
And there's their space for the students who are more advanced to move forward?
Oh, absolutely, yes, yep.
We have 8th grade students that are enrolled in Algebra, and there's criteria for them to move on because they can get high school credit, but the, they need to meet the benchmarks in order to get the credit for high school Algebra 1 and move into Algebra 2 or Geometry.
Ms. Raymond?
Oh, nothing. I was just going to say, we, I think one of the things the district excels at is, especially with the more advanced students, is meeting them where they're at. I know that we have kids in the middle school who are taking Geometry in the 7th grade. I've, I know that there's a kid who was taking Trigonometry at one point in the middle school. So I think that we were able to make accommodations fairly easily for those few kids who are at the very advanced side of it. But it's the Tier 2 kids that I think Ms. Johnson was referring to, and wanting to make sure that we meet them where they're at and bring them up as well. But I was just asking, Dr. McKinney, are you looking for a particular motion this evening?
I was going to ask that question, but go ahead. You did.
Yeah, I can't make motions.
I know, but I mean, you asked a question, I was going to ask that question. Are you waiting to...
So it is within the board's purview to adopt and approve the primary instructional materials in a content area. So I would ask for the board's support in adopting Eureka at the middle school level.
Can I have a motion to adopt this material? Is discussion closed? Everyone feel comfortable?
Yes, so move.
Okay. All right. Would I, could I get a motion to...
Well, actually, I have to vote on it.
Oh, pardon, hold on.
So, so just to be clear for the recording and the people writing the motions down, can you repeat the exact wording of the motion?
The motion is to implement Eureka in grade 8 to K through 8. Is that right?
6 through 8.
It's already been officially adopted K through 5, so technically, this is a 6 through 8 adoption.
Right. So it's an extension of, we already got the K through 5, so I just said K through 8. So that's a continuation.
Oh, okay, yep.
That's why. That's why. So the motion is to implement Eureka in grades K through eight.
Okay.
May I have a second?
Second.
All right.
Okay, let's vote.
You don't have to do a voice vote. Roll call, you can do a voice.
We could do a voice because we're doing this, okay? Okay. Ms. Brown?
Yes, yes, we could do a voice, voice vote today. So if you are in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye. Okay. Passes.
The motion passes. Thank you. All right, moving on. Thank you very much, Ms. Pro.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you. All right. So, ooh, the lights are back up. Next, we are going to hear about the grant sub-award notification and accept, or to possibly accept some grants. So yay, we love money. So, Dr. McKinney?
Yes, thank you. So as you can see in the memo and the attached literature, we're happy to announce that we received a $50,000 grant award to develop and support multi-tiered systems of support for behavioral health and wellness. So you have a framework description from the Office of Student Wellness. Basically, what this is, one-time funds for startup, for us to take a closer look at how we help all students across all schools and levels with proven school and community-based behavioral health practices so that all, every student can achieve health and wellness and be successful in school. I believe Ms. Raymond mentioned the tiers, so you have a nice little graphic there. And basically, what we're looking to do is have continuity throughout the district in all the schools and the levels. What are class, school-wide expectations look like? What are classroom expectations look like? And then what are the targeted interventions we can help for particular students who are struggling or at risk? So given the size of the award, it's within the grant, the board's purview to accept the funds. And then we would work to develop a plan along with our strategic plan. We have an SEL task force that's up and running and our Student Behavior Task Force that's been working and also engaging with some city partners around what does the framework look like and how can we can be consistent all the way through to all schools. I know every school has their own unique identity, but we do want to have some best practices at every school so we're consistently responding to kids when they need our help and support. So good news. That's all I have for now.
Okay.
Really good news.
Do we have any questions? Comments? We have already accepted the grant. Do we have to motion to do that?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody have any questions or comments about the use of funds? All right. All right. I would like to motion that we accept the grant from, from the New Hampshire MTSSB Framework Description, I'm sorry, the National School District Multi-Tierred System of, for Behavioral Health and Wellness Grant for $50,000.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Timmons. And if we all do a voice vote, if we'd like to accept the grant, please say yes.
Aye.
Aye.
And motion passes. Aye. All right. Next up, we are going to look into some contracts for, in a couple of different areas. Is this all good for public discretion? Is this all good for public? Is there any reason? All right. So the first thing we're going to talk about, discuss is, are these going to be kind of all encompassing, talking about them together? Or do you think they really are line items?
If we could go one by one because they are a little unique, if that's okay.
Okay, that's all right.
So per policy, all contracts or purchase orders $10,000 or more have to be approved by the board. So the first one here is a contract for services with Dr. Cassie Yakley. She's one of the state's leading experts on developing trauma-responsive schools. So this contract is over two years for her to engage in work with not only a district leadership team, but then working with the schools and some leadership teams at the school level to develop trauma-responsive schools consistently throughout the district. We'll be using some of our grant funds to pay for this. And again, she or one of her associates most likely will be, again, engaging with our SEL task force and our Student Behavior Task Force, as well as our administrators, to do some professional development, consult, developing some building level supports and facilitating an assessment process for the district and the schools to be basically TRS schools.
And which schools right now qualify as trauma-responsive schools?
Well, that term is moved around a lot, so I think we have some trauma-responsive practices, but to the degree that this expert would say, I don't know if we're fully implemented, but we're certainly on the road.
Okay. Ms. Raymond?
Which grant is this coming from?
This is a Title IV grant, student and academic support.
Thank you.
Does, is Ms. Yakley, is she, so she comes in and tells people how to recognize, kind of teaches the staff to recognize characteristics of trauma and then teaches them how to work with the kids to find that, what is, is that kind of what we're looking at here as a consultant?
So her consulting group would do professional development with our leadership team and develop school supports. So this and that other grant all kind of tie together of building on relationships, building on connections with kids so they feel that they can come to school, have safe, predictable routines, but then also have a toolbox when kids escalate and respond and how we can respond accordingly.
Ms. Timmons?
Hey, Dr. McKinney, the grant amount is, I don't see it anywhere.
This, this one, the price is $21,000 for grants. So the, the grant, this, is this the grant?
So, no, that's not the grant. $21,600 would be the amount of the title, the amount we would pay to Yakley Consulting Group and that $21,600 would come from Title IV grants. Yes?
Correct.
It might be helpful to write out, like, proposed motions.
Let me see which one are you using. Just out of curiosity. I don't see that. Yes, Ms. Johnson?
Okay, I want to get a little bit more clarification. Are we talking about students that are coming to school that could be abused at home or with the trauma that they're coming to school? They, they need counselors here to help them through the day and is that kind of what I'm hearing?
There could be a part of the puzzle, yes. That's not all of it, but yes.
What's the rest of the puzzle here then?
So providing professional development consultation to staff, getting all teachers and administrators trained and having a consistent response and district message around hailing students have, who have been exposed to trauma.
So, correct me if you're wrong, you're asking what's the definition of a student, a trauma student or a student who has experienced trauma? Like, how does that define?
Yeah, how, yeah, I guess I kind of did a roundabout.
So somebody who's been exposed to trauma could look at many different things. I'm not a certified social worker, like some people here around the horseshoe, but there are assessments around acute childhood experiences where kids are exposed to very traumatic events that have an impact on them for a long period of time. And it's not, this isn't going to cure them or is it going to help resolve the problem? But it gives us more tools and understanding to resolve some kids. So when they're acting out, it doesn't mean that they're making a bad choice. There could be some underlying reasons and it helps us kind of peel down the layers to get to the root cause.
Ms. Johnson?
Okay, so we're going to train the teachers to be able to see, you know, find, kind of peel down the layers, see why, I've got to try to phrase this just right, you know? So we're taking teachers, we're asking them to do a little bit more in their day, almost to be social workers in a way, to be able to identify students who have some type of trauma through this agency. They're going to come in and teach them and/or specialists or administrators who have no licenses in any of this to be able to identify students that might have some trauma. Is that correct?
No, I wouldn't say that's correct at all. We're not asking teachers to diagnose or take them out of the classroom. We're giving them professional development. We're raising their skills and awareness and we're empowering them with the resources that they're asking for based on the kids that are coming in front of them. It doesn't mean they're going to diagnose them, prescribe medication or prescribe counseling. It's one of those kind of universal things that happen in a school around setting expectations, responding to behavior and having an understanding on a long-term behavioral plan. So we're not looking to lose instructional time. We're looking to build capacity and understanding for the nature and the urgency of the students that are coming through the school doors.
So, can I ask a clarifying question? So are we asking teachers, are we hoping that this assistance from Dr. Yakley will help our teachers to differentiate their teaching a little bit based on the behaviors that they're seeing in the classroom? So perhaps give them different tools, like when to recognize that, you know, perhaps confrontation isn't the best, you know, time? Maybe this is a time to, you know, take a space or, I don't know, I'm not a teacher. I don't do that stuff. But the idea being that that will help them to have some alternative methods, not methods, behaviors themselves in the classroom that will then help kids who might have behaviors?
I would say that's certainly a part of it. That other grant that we referenced, one of the building blocks is having well-intentioned adults in the building who are calm, safe, predictable, can deal, de-escalate situations. So these are all part of essential strategies that teachers need to know and be able to do. So would these happen on in-service days? Yes. Would this be a whole school kickoff in the beginning of the year? Yes. Could it happen at a faculty meeting, an early release day, the first day of school, we all come together? Absolutely. But I think from the Behavior Task Force, social workers, guidance counselors, school psychologists, they're all asking for help in this space. I don't think we can continue being reactive and disciplining kids without having some proactive solutions and developing a more comprehensive understanding of all the facets of behavior.
I'm hearing a lot from people about long-term teachers who are finding students today coming in with more challenges, more barriers to learning than they've seen before. And I have to wonder if it's like related to the opiate crisis, if it's related to, you know, families with, you know, increased poverty, if it's, you know, if it's all of those things together. But I'm sure the teachers would appreciate having more tools in their toolbox if they're seeing new behaviors or different behaviors than they've seen in the past.
I think it's a very good observation, Ms. Raymond. Are there any other questions on this? Did you get a program?
Got it.
Yeah? All right.
I'm not convinced 100%, but I see, I understand what's, what's happening out there now in the community and in the schools. And I think it's tougher for kids and that's the hardest thing is the kids. You know, like Ms. Raymond said, you know, kids, you know, some of them, you know, parents addicted.
We can't hear you.
Some of them kids come from families that are addicted and it's, it's hard for these students. I'm just not 100% sold on this, but I'm going to vote for it at this point in time and maybe I can get a little bit more information. Someone, excuse me, it's going to, excuse me, it comes before the full board. I just, I'm just trying to find out, like, you know, where it comes with the teachers. I understand specialists, I understand administrators. I don't want to put anything more on the teacher's plates at this point in time because I'm not asking to prescribe, diagnose or treat. But in a way, if they're not in that profession, they're around the students all the time, but in a way, they are going to be somehow diagnosing, you know, if there's a behavior problem. And I just have that, I'm not 100% comfortable on this, but I will support it to get to the board and hopefully maybe I can get a little bit more information on this, exactly what they're going to be doing. That would be great.
Can I?
Yes, Ms. Timmons?
Dr. McKinney, it's not, it's to recognize the behavior, not to analyze it. There's two different things. You're recognizing a behavior so you can, so you can prefer that person over to the right agency or the right, in this case, Yakley, Yakley. It's not, it's only to recognize, it's not to do anything else. It's not to diagnose, it's not to do anything else.
And then hopefully also to teach strategies. Like in the classroom, so that if you have a student that you know suffers from the situation, you can modify your teaching style to kind of accommodate that, to not have triggers. Is that accurate as well?
Just recognizing it. Is that the case?
I guess, let's try coming at it this way. I think we've all gone to school and the days of compliance in schools don't always work. Of asking kids to come in and sit down and take out whatever and get ready to learn, that's not going to work. So part of this work is to say, if you're not greeting kids at the door and welcoming them, you're not going to get an understanding and you may not going to get it all the time, but if a child was homeless and sleeping in a car for two weeks and trying to get clothes and food, they're not going to respond to the same things that you've used before for 20 years. So that's kind of the shift we're asking. And we're just asking people to become more cognizant, make connections. I understand the huge demands that are respond on teachers, but we're people and we build connections with kids and no meaning, meaningful learning happens without a significant relationship and connection. And if you're just going to come in and teach math, it's not going to work. You're teaching the kids that are in front of you. So those are just like a glimpse of what this work is about and we need everybody kind of in that same space because if they go from one classroom to feeling like, hey, I have a real great connection with that teacher, to going down the hallway and getting yelled at, a nine or 10-year-old who is just literally trying to hold their family together is not going to respond well. So those are kind of the systems that we're looking to develop and an understanding in a systematic way.
Thank you, Dr. McKinney. Yeah, or do you feel like we already don't? All right. A motion, let's motion to approve the contract for services between the Yakley Consulting Group and the National School District for the services provided as presented. May I get a second?
Second.
All right. For, by Ms. Johnson. And if, to approve this, let's say, say aye.
Wait, 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 wait. Can I just ask that you include the dollar amount in your motion? I'm sorry.
Yes, I'm sorry. All right, let's say approve the, okay, I'd like to amend the motion to include that the district would like to pay the contractor in the sum of $21,600.
I'll second that. Thank you.
And then if you would like to approve this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. All right. Next on the agenda, we have a contract from, for Balanced Literacy at Led Street.
So both the next two contracts go to Led Street Elementary School. I think included in one of the presentations, Led Street is a CSI school, meaning they're under accountability status. Also with that label comes some grant funding to help improve student achievement. So one of the things they're looking to do based on their school improvement plan, based on the support from the state, is to bring in this consulting group, Bonnie McGrath Consulting Group, to look at balanced literacy. She here is asking for $15,000 for services that would include six days of training and support mainly around balanced literacy at Led Street. Over the years, there has been some turnover at Led Street, both with the teachers and the administration. So this is an opportunity then, for all of them to have the same understanding of best practices, what they're supposed to be doing every day for all kids in the classroom before they get to, you know, tier two or a higher level of intervention in tier three. So.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions? Actually, so have we used this professional development or used this particular contractor before for this service?
Not this particular one. This is new to the district. But she has worked with the principal. But she has worked with the principal, Mr. Miller, before in another state.
And is Mr. Milner in favor of this program?
Yes, ma'am.
Do we, is, do we think that six days is sufficient to make this work? I mean, is that enough?
Good question. It is.
I believe so. This is one piece of the puzzle, along with the other one. So, they also have a new reading specialist over there, Lori Vance, who's been taking on a lot of the work. So, after the contractor's here and develops it, I think the sustainability model is for the leadership team, the reading specialists, and others to take over the work and make sure this happens on a regular basis.
Is there any further discussions or questions? All right. I move that we accept the contract for services between the McGrath Consulting Group and the Nashua School District in the amount of $15,000 as presented by Dr. McKinney. May I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Johnson. And the, say aye if you approve.
Aye.
Motion passes. All right. Finally, one more contract for the Baker Evaluation Research and Consulting, also at Led Street Elementary.
So, the BURK Group is a group that would be working during the course of this year. And what they do is conduct classroom walkthroughs and provide data back to the leadership team on those high-power-leveraged strategies around tier-one instruction. So, given the turnover and some things that have happened at Led Street, they, there's a concern around consistency. So, what this does is gives them numerical data and comparing the data over the course of time, to make sure they're making progress and being consistent in the classroom with their instructional practices. They also define effective classroom practices, and the STAR acronym, which stands for Skills, Thinking, Application, and Relationships. So, that protocol is what the contractor helps do some professional development, and then that's a framework that they can go around the school and see that all kids are getting exposed to Eureka Math, or reading workshop, or running instruction, along with these kind of high-leverage strategies as well. So, this is, to your question earlier, this is a new contractor, but also someone that has worked with the principal before in another state, paid with CSI grant funds.
Ms. Raymond?
Thank you. I just wanted to speak for this contract. I had a nice meeting with Mr. Miller the last go-round of the school tours, and he spoke very highly of this experience, and he kind of explained it as coaching, as opposed to, like, analysis. It's very much, like, strength-based, like, we see you're doing this, how about we try this, kind of a situation to get everybody on the same page. Mr. Miller is a very energetic person, but he was very enthusiastic about this program. It sounded like his staff was pretty interested in it, too. So, I don't know.
I'm actually glad to hear, that was actually going to be my question. Is this?
Right. I don't know much more about it.
Instruction, or is it, like, another assessment? I noticed that it did mention something in there about analyzing progress, and I was just wondering, is this one more test we're throwing at kids that are already taking tests and struggling all the time?
Right. My understanding, this is for the, the teachers, not the kids. So, there's no testing of kids, right? It's, it's saying, like, here are skills that we're looking to see the teachers exhibit, and how can we help you get there? Kind of a thing.
Yeah?
Yep. Like, one of them would be.
We had a long conversation, and he was, like, super jazzed about it.
That's Mr. Miller in a nutshell. Yep. One of them would be turn and talk. So, how many times during a classroom lesson did you ask kids to turn and talk, process information, then go and apply it? So, simple strategies like that would be looked at, based on the classroom, but not testing the kids and giving feedback to either the classroom teacher, grade levels, or the school.
All right. So, it's like, all right. Any further discussion? All right. Let's see. I would like to move that we accept the contract for services between the STAR, sorry, the BURK Group and the City of Nashua, or, I'm sorry, Nashua School District in the amount of $30,000.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ms. Johnson. If you're in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Motion passes. All right. Does anyone have any new business, or things they'd like to put on the agenda for next month?
I just want to go on the record about changing our venue to, back to Led Street. We discussed that earlier, and we agreed to, the committee agreed to go back to Led Street as needed. And if we need to come back here for larger groups, we'll do that. It's, it would be advantageous for all involved in this committee to meet over at the district office.
I think we need to consult with Dr. Mosley and possibly Tom Clausen about that, because there was a specific reason that we moved it over here, to ensure that people's right to attend our public meetings wasn't infringed. And I want to make sure that we, we still follow that. And if, if going back over there doesn't infringe anybody's rights to attend a public meeting, I don't see any reason why not, but we have to make sure that that circumstance still doesn't, doesn't still exist. Does that make sense?
It makes sense. But however, we, as a committee, did agree, and we did talk to Dr. McKinney and Ms. Fitzpatrick that thought it was a good idea that we go as intimate, to have a lodge room like this doesn't make sense. We talked to our committee members, Ms. Johnson, and Ms. Brown, who also agreed that. They had no problem going back over there, neither do I.
Yeah, I mean, it's your, it's your committee. My only concern is making sure that the public, and all the members of the public who would want to attend are able to come, and two, that we, oh, the other issue is talking to Mr. Johnson over at ATV to see if they are able to continue to videotape it, because that's also something we do.
Okay. All right, I will, I'll be happy to make those calls and make, find out, do some little research. Okay. All right. Yes, Ms. Johnson?
I just want to say that I hope we can do that, because before we built this magnificent room here, that's where we were stuffed the sardines, sardines in that room for all our meetings, and the public did come, and they did raise their opinion, I believe it was televised. But then again, that was the early days, before, I guess, the television really came out for board meetings. I don't want to date myself, but I think.
Go ahead and date yourself.
But I think it would be better, because, like we said earlier, so the public can understand, basically, if there's information we need, they can get on the computer, they can copy it for us, they can get us the additional information. And the members of the administration work all day long, and why should they, you know, have to schlep over here to the high school, where it's just as convenient and it's close to the public? You know, we welcome the public to come in here. Unfortunately, I'm saying it's too cold tonight, that's why nobody, that's why they stay at home.
They're smart.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right. From Ms. Johnson, and we are adjourned at, oh, sorry, I apologize. Obviously, I'm itching to get home. No, motion, and to approve the motion to adjourn.
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, I am so.
All right. And we are adjourned at 7:30 on January 21st.